Good morning. Before we begin today's council meeting, I need to make an announcement that we do not have our council president here today, nor the council president pro tem. So we will need to elect a chairperson for this meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to do that at this time.
So move.
I would like to nominate Councilman Williams.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second for Councilman Williams to serve as chairperson for today. Those in favor, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, we will have Mr. Deborah Williams take control of the meeting at this time.
I need to warn you, just my left arm just act if I had to hit Bob all the time, so...
I'm right-handed.
Okay, all right.
All right. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned off to the off or vibrate positions. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on TV on Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on the city clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Councilman Nichols is absent. Councilman Stewart?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is also absent. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we're thankful that you've allowed us to see you another day. We ask that you continue to bless our representatives at the local, state, and federal level. We ask that your hands continue to be involved in situations where they are trying to resolve peace in areas of conflict. We ask that our minds be ever mindful and focused on those who are going without in this cold weather season. We are in great, in fact grateful for the change in season, but we know that there are those who are going without. We ask that our hearts be focused on them as we continue to be thankful for the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We ask that all of these things be done in a way that is according to your will, and we will be able grateful and thankful to give you the praise and the glory and the honor. These things we ask in your son's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee meetings, work session, and the city council meeting held on March 19th.
So move.
Second.
Vote.
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 15th through the week of March 21st.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations?
No.
Okay, no proclamations. Unfinished business, do we have any today? All right, no unfinished business. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 110 Oakley Drive in District 2, First Community Credit Corporation, Orley Roden Life Estate being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Greer with the Building Department. Started this case in November of 2011. There have been no improvements, no permits taken out. We ask today that you pass a resolution to abate the nuisance.
The chair will entertain adoption to, a motion to adopt this resolution?
So move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 905 Avenue F in District 3, the State of Alabama, Leonard Thomas Mathis, Charles C. Ann Harris and Gregory Harris being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of 2010, then no improvements, no permits taken out. Today, we're asking that you pass a resolution to abate it.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'm thankful to the Building Department, and I know there's several neighbors who are very thankful that this property is finally coming down. I think we had worked this case and then it went off and transferred or something. I'm not sure what happened, but finally, they're going to have some relief in that neighborhood, so I really appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
All right. Our next public hearing is a resolution approving nuisance of an alcoholic beverage license for Golden China Restaurant located at 957 West Meagan Boulevard. They have applied for an off premises retail beer and table wine license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Okay, does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
That's on and off premises.
Yeah.
Okay, that's correct. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located at 401 North 11th Street in District 3, from I-1 Light Industry District to B-2 General Business District. The owner requested the rezoning for the purpose of selling the property to a local church that will utilize the property for that purpose. The planning commission unanimously recommended the council approve the rezonings. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, we didn't discuss this upstairs, but since there's no opposition at this time, I would ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
I ask for passage.
I believe the vote would have to be unanimous.
Oh, you abstained. That's why you abstained, huh?
Yeah.
Hey, I'm sorry. I backed off the abstention, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Yeah. Make that a yes vote.
That was, I'll record that as a yes vote for Councilman Reed. Consent has been granted.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, I understand. Now I'll make a motion if we approve.
Second.
Now we're open for discussion.
All right. Vote first and then discuss?
No.
This is the old Marvin's building, where Marvin's was at one times. Wondering where it is.
Yeah, the reason I questioned upstairs, the reasoning behind going to a full B-2, it being a church, and I thought it should have been a B-1, but I understand if it fails as a church, they can go into a B-2, but I thought it should come back before the council if that need be. That's why I abstained on it. That's the only reason I abstained.
I know, and I had that same concern. But again, it's obvious that this piece of property has had problems marking in it being in I-1, and I have my reservations about the B-2, but I'm going to take my chances and hopefully the property owner or the church, I'm hoping the church will purchase it and then we won't have that problem. Yeah, then we won't have that problem. But we can always come back and revisit it if it gets to be a bingo parlor or if it gets to be maybe a strip club or something like that, we can always come back and revisit.
Yeah, like you said, Mr. Avery, we can always come back and revisit it, but the main thing is that we're moving it from I-1 to business.
So we can move the property.
It should not be in industry, light industry in the way.
Right, I agree. That's the only reason I'm supporting it.
Right.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
That's it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public here is an ordinance amending Section 130-202B 6, which removes guidelines for lighting except for B-4 districts from design review and places them in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Department requested the change in an effort to eliminate contradictions between the guidelines and the ordinances and to better provide for enforcement of the lighting regulations. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it? This ordinance also has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on this next week. Okay? Our final public hearing is an ordinance amending Section 130, and this one's actually presented in tandem with the other item. It's Section 130-411C 2 and 6 regarding off-street parking facilities. It specifies the parameters of lighting allowed in off-street parking facilities in pedestrian areas to range from a minimum of one to a maximum of two candles and not to exceed one-half foot, one-half foot candles in a pedestrian area abutted along the property line. Light levels in parking lots shall average from two to five foot candles in a uniform manner. Floodlights are prohibited. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I have a question. What's a foot candle? How much is that?
Measurement of light.
I know.
By the foot.
Yeah, how mu, how, how much is that? I mean, how much light in the foot?
We bragged on foot.
It's a candle, candle, a candlelight in the foot.
Huh? It's what? Okay. No, that's okay, I just...
Let the record show that the mayor's assistant is Googling the answer.
I'll Google it later. Okay.
All right, this ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council again will vote on it next week. All right. Last item here is a resolution authorizing agreement with YMCA to provide management services at the city pool at the rate of $435 per week plus reimbursement for salaries paid to pool employees. This agreement is to be renewed annually unless terminated by 90-day notice. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I think the pool is scheduled to open on the Monday after, it was the first Monday in June, whatever that is. The pool is scheduled to open the first Monday, June 3rd, so it's scheduled to open June 3rd.
All right, there's no other discussion? Discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing cancellation of existing lease and concession agreement with Deborah Knight and authorizing an asset purchase agreement to purchase the inventory and equipment from midnight in an amount of $45,000.
You got a second?
Oh, I did.
You do now. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is, this is the gift shop at Knockalittle Falls. The city will take over that enterprise immediately, and we look for good things to continue to happen at Knockalittle Falls, perhaps expanding the inventory and the items that are, that will be offered at the gift shop at Knockalittle Falls.
It's got an extensive inventory.
Very extensive.
All right. Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider at this time. It's authorizing a supplementary agreement with JBW and T for additional professional services for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge replacement project.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I'd ask for a passage.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is the bridge over Black Creek that, on Tuscaloosa Avenue, that have a pretty big hole in it right now, being so he's tired of laying in that hole for cars to run over to keep him from falling in. I'm not sure the completion date on this.
I didn't hear him say.
But anyway, it's been a bad spot on Tuscaloosa Avenue if you've been across that bridge there, so we're going to be able to get this taken care of.
This should have cut our coal mix consumption in half because they kept pouring it in the hole and it kept going in the creek. So I think we're going to save a whole lot of money by just going here and getting this project done.
We're going to get our money back real quick, okay?
Absolutely.
All right.
All right, any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
Mr. President, Council Howell Matthews with the Public Works Department. Just wanted to give you an update on how the, the collection is going with the brush collection after the storm. We've got all of our loader trucks out in different, different areas. The majority of it appears to be to the southern end of the city, but there's been damage all over north Gedston, and it appears to be one of the lighter areas. So we've focused more, we've moved our loader trucks around, but if you've, if you've got anything on the streets that, that we need to, need to collect, or you think we're overlooking you, we haven't done that. It's just playing catch-up with the, the main thing is to get the heavy brush out of the way. Would like to remind all the homeowners that if a contractor comes in and cuts the brush for you, it's the contractor's responsibility to remove the brush. And we, also a couple of stipulations in what we can pick up because of our, the, the equipment we have. I would like to remind everybody that the city ordinance says that we can pick up up to 10 inches in diameter, three feet in length in tree trunks, things that nature. But if you can pull it out to the, we can't go on private property, but if you'll pull it out to the street and private, private households, if they're doing the work, there's, we'll get to that just as soon as we can. But again, I'd like to remind that contractors, they're, if they're being paid to come in and take a tree down, they need to take it to the landfill.
It doesn't matter if it's a roof contractor or a tree removal contractor, what, if it's a contractor, if it trees, if anything.
That's, that's correct. If, if anybody didn't hear that, it's, if it's a contractor, irregardless, it's, if it's any type of a contractor, they're responsible for the removal of the brush or the materials or possibly even part of a house, house structure.
But don't we also, in that ordinance, don't we have a fee? For instance, if you had a contractor who didn't pick it up and you got all that stuff out there, we'll pick it up for a fee, right? I forgot, don't we have a load fee or something?
No, sir, we, well, we, actually, that comes into play if we, if, if there's an issue where we have to take someone to, to court. If it's litigate a case, that we, we do have a fee that we add on to it if someone just refuses to get the brush out. But generally, we don't, as far as, we don't offer that service to charge a fee to come pick up.
I thought, I thought we had that at one time, okay. The other question I have, I've had some calls with the damage that we've had in Etowah County, and I, nobody's here from EMA, I don't think. Are we going to be looking at a declaration that FEMA will come in and assist? Because I know there was a lot of damage. I don't know if that was enough or not. I know the governor has to, to make that call, but have we made application or checked to see if we?
Last week when I spoke to my Brian, we were not, we were not going to meet the threshold.
We were not going to meet the threshold, okay.
It was pretty high.
I know it's a pretty high threshold, but I was asked that question, and I know we had quite a bit of damage, I just didn't know how much, okay.
With the damage to some of the structures, you know, our ordinance says that we will not pick up any building material. Are we making any kind of exception in this instance?
We've, we've made some exceptions on that, given the circumstance, and it's...
Well, I think we should.
And what we try to do, Jason Hill, our environmental officer, and as, as well as myself, and Steve Shields, our other supervisor in that department, we go out and try to look at individual, each individual case and make a determination at that time, so... But we're, but to answer your question, yes, we're trying to work with the homeowner.
Are you familiar with the big tree that came down on South Night Street, and all that tree was put on the street? Are you familiar with that one?
On, on South Night?
Okay. I talked to Mr. Hilton about it.
I'm sorry, Councilman, that one, that was not ringing a bell, was it?
It was a big tree, and they, they got almost the whole street, the whole block of limbs and debris from that street, and it's something we can't pick up.
Right. Hmm. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional department reports? All right, we're down to remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Harris, you want to start?
Yes, I'll just be very brief in, in reminding people, those travelers on Payton Ridge and Payton Road to please slow down. We're very adamant about the fact that we want you to slow down coming through our We, we, we solicit your cooperation for traveling through the neighborhood. Schools out, we in, I guess we in vacation time, eight weeks or something, and a lot of the kids are out, so be careful when you're going through the neighborhood. Slow down, you know, because they're out, and even though the weather hasn't been very conducive to being outside, kids do be outside playing, and you know, in a lot of our neighborhoods, we have kids that have basketball goals set up in the, in the edge of their yard so they can take advantage of the streets for, for surface, so be careful when you're driving through our neighborhoods, protect our kids, and, and everybody have a safe weekend, and we see you next week.
Councilman Avery?
Yeah, we do have a holiday coming up, I just realized that Easter is this, this week, I think you probably got an announcement coming too. But anyway, I hope everybody have a, a safe Easter and holiday. I, I'm going to wait till next week because I want to pull up this website where I think that the city of Gadsden is losing about $20 million in this ordeal that's going on in Washington. I can't remember that big word they use up there, but the bottom line is they cutting all about, they cutting all these federal dollars. I understand that the city of Gadsden stands to impact about $20 million, and people say that's, that's ridiculous. How can that happen in Gadsden? But when you look at everything that's being cut, which is, whatever that word is...
Rescations.
Yeah, see, I can't even, it's crazy. But when you, when you look at schools, free lunches, government, a lot of things that the government is in, people don't realize, and particularly in Alabama, I, I don't know why our elected officials from Alabama would even let this go through, particularly when we receive about a dollar, and I think at one time it used to be about a dollar seventy-five cents on every dollar we send to Washington, we get back into this state, and we're going to be losing a lot of that money because of the fact that you got somebody up there who's supporting parties as opposed to supporting what's practical and what's right for the people back home. But at any rate, as soon as I can get a breakdown on all of the monies that we're going to be losing here locally, I'll wait, hopefully next week, and have a list of all of that.
Councilman Stewart?
I don't have anything this morning, thank you.
Really?
I did want to welcome Ariel Hope Brooks from the great city of Glencoe, Alabama this morning. That's Ed Watley's granddaughter. And I think she really should stand up and let the people of Glencoe see her on television.
That's his favorite granddaughter too, remember?
Do what?
That's his favorite granddaughter.
Oh, that's right, you're the only one. Face back that way. There you go, Ariel. That's great, that's uptown.
Ed said that's his favorite granddaughter.
And tell Mayor Peanut we appreciate you, him sending you up here as a representative this morning. Very much appreciate it. Absolutely, Ed.
Ed, she told me she was the only one too.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only other thing I have is next week, hopefully, we're going to have a Public Safety Committee meeting, and we're going to be talking about the litter and the noise ordinances which have been kind of dropped along the wayside. If people haven't noticed, litter is kind of increasing in the city of Gedston, and if you drive on Meagan Boulevard and have, and you stop at a stoplight and you have to sit there and listen to the boom-boom next door to you, the noises are picking up pretty well. I don't believe, Shane, that we budgeted for that this year in overtime, so, for noise and litter, okay? And that's what we're going to be talking about this week. Billy, I failed to mention that to you the second time, but you're on that committee, and I know Robert is, and it's a concern because it's time we start cleaning this city up again. If you don't believe that it's on the side of the road, just take a ride all around town. We got plenty of it, and we got a little, little bit of noise going on, we need to shut that down. So we'll be meeting on that next week. Anyway, that's all I have.
Mr. President, I want to congratulate you on running an orderly meeting downstairs. You didn't do too good upstairs, but you did great down here, and I want to let you know how much we appreciate it.
Thank you, I'm not above gathering you down here either. Due to the Good Friday holiday, Thursday's garbage route will be collected on Wednesday, and Friday's route will be collected on Thursday. I just had a couple of announcements, or a couple of items under remarks. I want to thank the Gadsden Times, there was a great article, I think, on yesterday, talking about the Alabama Medicaid system and its proposed overhaul. You know, want to encourage people to get, become familiar with what that entails, you know, very generically speaking, and I'm not going to try to present myself as an expert, but essentially, you know, Councilman Avery touched on the fact that the state of Alabama is very heavily impacted by sequestration because of the amount of federal monies that we receive, and because of that, of course, Medicaid, this becomes a more critical issue for us. What's being proposed, obviously, is that we're going to make, create incentive for private groups or, or otherwise to come forward and actually manage that Medicaid expense for a profit, thus driving down some of the waste and, and driving down some of the abuse of the system. So please pay attention to that because it's going to impact the services that a number of poor people receive and a number of elderly people receive as it relates to Medicaid. of poor people receive and a number of elderly people receive as it relates to Medicaid, so pay, pay very close attention to that. Also, today is American Diabetes Association, is the American Diabetes Association's Alert Day. You know, that's near and dear to me because I've been a member of the Diabetes Association for a number of years, primarily because my grandmother came to the very cruel effects of, of diabetes. And, and of course, I have other family members that are fighting that very cruel disease as well, so again, please be mindful that today is American Diabetes Association Alert Day. Is there anything else to come forward, councilman?
Just mention that you was talking about Medicaid. Medicaid consumes, I believe, 39% of the general fund budget of our state, so it's a big, big problem. I think they addressed anybody, and more than likely, they're going to hurt people when they do address it, so I, that's something that we need to look at.
Yeah, it is, it is something that bears all of our attention, those of us who have a concern. You know, we, we, we've, we've, state of Alabama has declined, you know, to, to take the 300 million or whatever it is that the federal government's offering us for a free Medicaid expansion program for three years, we declined that. And also, I, I truly hope that, that the changes that we're making in Medicaid are correct. However, there's always doubt in my mind whenever you change a program over to for-profit, to people who are going to run a program for-profit. I have, I have to think, you know, that there, there may be some shortcomings in that program because greed sets in, you know, when you say we're going, all the, all the money you can save in, in the Medicaid program will be a profit for you. I get scared when I hear that. We just need to keep our eyes on it and make sure that it, it's, it's done properly.
I like the commercial where it says it's not rocket scientists, it's not rocket science. You know, it's a simple solution to our problem with Social Security and Medicare, Medicaid and everything else. If you take the cap off of everybody's salary and let them pay from now on, we could fund all those programs with no problems. I didn't even realize there was a cap on it. I think it's $117,000 now, because I, I never made that kind, even when it was $10,000. Did you say, being it was at $10,000 one time or something?
When I started, it was $7,800, I believe, and they cut off. And now it's $117,000.
I wasn't making $7,800 back in those days, so.
Oh, really?
I wasn't, I wasn't privy with that cap, but, but it's a simple cap, I mean, it's a simple solution if you take the cap off. Just think of all the people who would still be paying in, and, and I can't understand why they can't see that. But it's rocket science, so. Okay.
And, you know, for tho, for those of us that may have, that may have missed that, the, the cap pretty much impacts earnings above that threshold of $117,000. So essentially, those that are earning beyond that aren't paying Social Security taxes on that portion, so. Obviously, most of us up here haven't hit that threshold yet, so that's, most of us in this room actually haven't hit that threshold yet, so it's not really impacting us, it's impacting those who make beyond that. So something to consider as you're becoming more and more educated on how a lot of the, the laws that are being passed, you know, and I'll say this before we adjourn, right now, there are competing budget, budgets that have been presented in Congress by the House and the Senate. The House, which is primarily Republican-controlled, has presented a budget that speaks to a number of cuts to some of the programs that are near and dear to us. Then the Senate, in turn, has presented a, a budget that raises taxes on the wealthiest of, of citizens, so. So obviously, some competing philosophies there, so please make yourself aware of what's going on as it relates to these bills. Is there anything else?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We adjourn.